All right, well, we ended up with...
Where do we end up?
Well, we spoke about the possible additional reductions, and I say possible because we've brought them here today to speak about, and we've certainly had a lot of conversation. And you can see if those possible reductions are implemented, that it would bring your fund balance up to a level that would meet your board policy. So that's certainly up for discussion. Any other conversations about the general fund and the possible reductions that we are proposing today?
Well, I think we need to talk about the terms of the staffing plan because that's where some of these are being implemented. The other question is, someone just asked me recently, we did have a list of proposed cuts last year that we didn't implement because either we didn't need to take the money or wasn't sufficient. One of them was the third grade swim program. There was marine science station. There was a number of things. Are you not proposing that we revisit that list of all those things, inclusive of these additional things you're asking?
We can bring that entire list back if you all would like to go through that list. That's bound us.
I mean, I think, you know, just like we did last time, we really need to have the opportunity to prioritize where the cuts are going to come from and then be responsible for them. Because I don't want to be responsible for something if I haven't been given the option of having those other...
Everything.
Yeah.
That's where we started at in January, and that's how we progressively got to here.
But this, no, we didn't get here, we got here since April 25th because the media specialists were not on the list in April 25th workshop when we went over this exact budget and staffing plan. I can show it to you in one of the lists.
We didn't go over the budget on April 25th. We postponed to the day. But we started with that original list in January. We started working.
April 23rd board workshop budget.
Yeah, but that's the budget, that's the...
I think one of the things, though, that took us by surprise is that in the past, we've said, when you brought us those lists, we said no to all of them. I mean, I think maybe one or two small things, but largely we've said no to it. Media was on that list along with all the other ones. We said no to marine science, swim, you know, changing the 251s to 246s, even TOCs. So I think, I think that there seemed to be a conversation between the last board meeting and now that then was, that it seems like then there was just a recommendation made. Of everything, it's media. Because that's, I think, the only one that's on that list that's presented to us that the rest of them are not on it. So that seemed to be, that's the choice. I think what's also, that's difficult, and that I think puts us in is, we can, we can go through this of looking again at other things. On the other hand, we don't meet again until June, and these principals are in a position of trying to plan. So I think there comes a point that we either have to take it off the table, or we decide we're not going to seek that $500,000 reduction when it comes to at least that one line item.
There's no reason why we can't have a board workshop. We're not, I mean, yeah, I mean...
But can principals plan for what they're doing? Because in two weeks, students are gone and teachers leave.
Well, we don't have a, yeah, but I mean, well, I, I mean, I can make, I can certainly come to a decision about this today. But I think as far as the budget cuts in general, I think, you know, if we need to have a workshop in a week or two, I think we need to have a workshop and have an open discussion, have a work session. Don't even have any judgements. Just talk about the budget.
We met last week with the elementary and middle school principals, and we discussed about the budget and different things in there. And I will tell you, they were very adamant that they could live without the swim program, they could live without marine science station, and that they also, we talked about different positions in the schools and their agreement on, and let me tell you, nobody in this room, from district staff to the principals, felt like that these are important positions. Or we wouldn't have had them for all these years in place if we didn't feel like there was a value to them. But they felt like that if they had to give up a position at each school, that this is a position that they could put back into the classroom where they would still maintain a job. They talked about PE teachers going from two to one, but then they got back to different programs, and again, from swimming and also marine science station. So we'll be glad to resurrect that list and schedule a workshop as soon as we can schedule one and discuss that. We'll be glad to bring that to you.
And that's...
Because we need some direction on how to meet this budget.
And that's what I was just going to say. I've got, because I pulled it up here. I've got the sheet from January. And this was, these were the lists, these were the things that we had crossed out. Basically, there was none of them at the time that we said we were willing to take. But...
The game changed.
The game changed. And then, of course, now the question is, that's the one that seems to have rose to the top. If we, you know, there becomes to me a question of, I think there's a question we have to ask ourselves, is how much do we feel like a minimum that either we do or don't need to cut for next year? And then maybe we then decide, look at, then what are those going to be to get to? I mean, I know staff's done that, but I'm saying as a board, you know, we've, here it looks like there's a million dollars in cuts, if I recall, is what these cuts are that you showed us.
The proposed today?
The proposal today.
That's correct.
So, I mean, the question is, is, and by doing that, that puts us back at 3.83 for our, you know, undesignated reserve. On the other hand, maybe the answer is, is we go to 3.5?
You know, the other thing is, and we talked about this when the budget cuts hit us the hardest, is that eliminating certain programs forever was a very difficult decision. But maybe we could eliminate some things temporarily, like the swim program, you know, sustaining that for a year. We talked about doing that. I don't know if we ever actually had to do that.
We haven't had it.
But there's a number of things we could do. But the one thing that we did say, and we were pretty clear about it, was not cut anything that negatively impacts instruction and especially instructional units. Those were the sacred caps. I would cut, I would cut two eights for every, instead of one teacher, if that's what the choice came down to. And, and asking principal, would you keep your media people on, would you have a job for them? I'm not so sure that was, the answer is of course. But the real question is, is an aide the same as a highly qualified, master's degree required instructional unit who is an integral part of rolling in the Common Core and doing all the curriculum and informational technology that you need to have people on staff, that without it, we've already seen at Sitcher Springs Middle School was a bit of a burden. And we're rolling these programs out in our other schools, and we're expecting a higher level of technology and use of technology and use of instructional material. How do we eliminate those people that are integral part of doing that and the knowledge at the same time? It's very counterproductive. And if we believe that a teacher's aide is the same as someone with a master's degree, that we should just have teacher's aides and get rid of everybody else?
I don't believe that's the thought.
But that's the message. It's the problem. That's the message. You've heard it today. That's what they believe. Whether, whether they're right or wrong, that's what they believe. And I don't believe that it's an equitable use of staff by saying we don't need them, or we can do without a media specialist, or we can put an aide in there instead. We've already eliminated the media aides anyway. They used to do, you know, how many, remember IPS? How many media aides was there at one time, two or three? I think there's, most of them, there's none.
There's none, no, there's actually...
They're doing the jobs by themselves. And the other thing is, I'm not even sure $500,000 is a correct figure because these media specialists, especially at middle school, I know at elementary school, they told me the same thing. They're teaching classes. So if you eliminate a middle school media specialist, you still have to have a teacher to take those kids during those periods that the media specialist was teaching them. So I'm not sure that, that numbers actually work.
It is accurate.
Well, what do you, who's going to teach those classes at those media specialists?
Nope. We schedule into whatever classes they're teaching. The principals will figure out the schedule.
Well, it's the same, we're saying, but it's not the same students per teacher. If you, if you take away a teacher's two or three classes, and you're not going to replace them with a teacher because you just eliminated that position, then you're either increasing your class size in your other classes.
Yes.
And we have a limit on that.
Correct.
Especially core, because we're teaching, because we're reading teachers. So I don't know that necessarily the number's going to necessarily work out, that you're going to take out a media specialist and replace it with an aide, and you're not going to have a deficiency in instructional units in those classes that they were teaching as part of the regular teaching.
That was a conversation, I understand, though, that, that was had with the principals. And do we have somebody that can maybe share out to us the answer to that? Because I think that is important for this board to understand how that works. I mean, I understand how it works, but that doesn't mean that, I mean, I think that's, that's an important issue. And I know Vicki Lofton is sitting there going, "No, no, not me." So you know what? Then Chris Bossy, he's younger, right?
Yeah.
I don't think that we understand how, oh, Liz, you're there.
Can we just say how, basically what we talked about is that each of our schools were different.
You know what? We, we need you to come to the microphones. Yeah, because we can't, and that we get complaints about that. So you're not allowed.
Then we get in trouble. We get in trouble if you don't come to the speaker. We don't want to get in trouble.
And the worst part is, is, Liz, and we're putting you in a terrible position because you're the...
It's all good. We have long discussion, and we don't want to make any of these cuts because we do absolutely believe that every single one of them are going to impact students. Just when we went around the room, we discussed what was best for our schools, knowing that each of our schools had, were different situations. The decision was made that this was what we had to do. Hopefully not permanently, hopefully for one year, and that we'd be able to bring them back.
But scheduling, I think it's hard for us to understand, okay, because they would have gone to that class.
Right.
So what happens with them?
We, we went back to the drawing board and looked at using the resources that we have. One of our ideas was splitting a class and sending them to PE so they would get more physical activity. We don't have to worry, excuse me, about class size. So we could put more kids in that to take up that slack. But I think that was one of the messages that we discussed, that we had hoped that this would be a temporary, and that at some point we would be able to bring them back.
I, I think that each school is different. And each school will figure out how to still fulfill the contracts that we need to fulfill for planning time and be able to make it work for our schools. At Pleasant Grove, last year, we worked to combine media and technology together. And because we do see that as very, very year-related. And then right now, I'm trying to figure out a way to still pay for that person from a Title I budget. So I think we're each trying to figure out how to best make it work for our schools, knowing that we have to make tough choices to be able to fulfill the requirements. Is that specific enough?
What the plan means?
What the plan's planning time, for example, that each teacher needs to have a 30-minute planning time during their student contact time, and that is something at the elementary level that we cover through our special areas rotation.
But I thought aides were not allowed to be in, have a class without being supervised by a teacher.
That's correct.
So how, so how is that going to relieve the teachers to send kids to the media center if you have an aide there that can't have responsibility for the students to be doing?
I know at my school, that aide will just check books in and out. The time in the media center will be with a technology specialist who will be working with research and using technology to do that research. So we will use our aide to check out the books.
So what else does your technology specialist do?
Now?
Well, will do.
She's going to be partly funded as a gifted teacher for third, fourth, and vet. She has Title I duties as intervention, and then she will be on the wheel in the media center with the technology.
So you're still going to have a media specialist, you're just not going to call it that somewhat?
No, we're not going to have someone that has the level of expertise that we've been accustomed to.
And we realize that is going to have an impact. But we looked at anything that we do from this point on, we think is going to have an instructional impact.
Why can't the media specialists be the technology specialists?
They absolutely can be. They absolutely can be. And that would be my hope. I thought that that's the way we're going in the future, is that they really need to be our technology leader as well as the media leader. Because they have the knowledge, these ladies were absolutely right. They have the knowledge, and they can help us learn how to put these worlds together. And I think that that's the critical piece. Because just because you have a fancy iPad or whatever it may be, if you don't have the correct apps, if you don't have access to the good books, et cetera, and they really can lead the way. So what we have to do is find a way to cut a position, cut costs, to help meet those requirements that yet still need to be met for our students. Like I said, each of our schools is doing it a little bit differently, but I think there's going to be some creative scheduling that's going to be built on.
We were one of the elementary schools that were hopefully getting the iPads. And our goal is for the teachers to become technology specialists within their classroom, with the curriculum and the technology. Because when they're managing, you know, 20 iPads, they're going to need to know that. They're not going to be able to stop instruction and wait for someone to come in and help. They're going to need that expertise.
You know, at the, you know a lot more about this than I do. When we visited Sitcher Springs Middle School, I was really surprised to find out that the expectation was that they would only develop one lesson plan for a month or a week for the first...
Like one a week or one every other. I mean, it was like two or three the first month.
It was a very, very low expectation. And I think part of the problem is that because the teachers were there trying to dream this all up themselves without a lot of, you know, they were the first ones. But they were struggling. And some of them got it right away, some of them didn't.
Well, most of them, I think, in that particular case, what they, what we learned was, we set the expectation so low, they actually, within the first month, completed what we expected them to do in the first six months. So they actually well exceeded that, but we weren't sure how, how that was going to move. And I, I agree with you as far as the, you know, there's two things that you said that I think is very important that we continue to lift out. One is that I do think media and technology, that there is a bridge there. With Ms. Myers, you had a wonderful model of that at your school. And that was an integrated part of your school. The other thing is that teachers do have to become technology specialists. We've recognized that. Pretty much, that's been a pervasive part of the conversation when it comes to the one-to-one.
That's one of the reasons I'm no longer teaching.
But I think, you know, the, the question is, while we see that, with teachers, we see where that's going, part of the one-to-one has been helping them to understand that, both in their curriculum, their instruction, and also in gaining those skills. The question is, you know, how do we then see us down the road? If this is something that you're saying is not something we're going to, that you see your schools sustaining, that you're saying, fine, we can triage and go a year or two, but we need them back. Well, that concerns me that we would go, that why would we ever take them away? Because the damage to reverse that or to do that would be very difficult. The trouble is, if that's not the way that you're saying that, if, if we're talking as Pasco County, that we're talking about a hybrid new individual, then we have to then, that's, that's something this board is going to have to work on with the executive team to see what that is. Because while they can serve that purpose, Ms. Kirby, the question we have to say is, is that what we are planning for today? And I think that what I hear from you all is that, that it doesn't appear like that's entirely what we're planning today. It's not to say we couldn't be, but that doesn't, I don't get the impression that if we're saying that that can come off of this. You know, if what we're hearing today, I worry when I hear, we've got Common Core, and yet our Common Core, we're saying, you know, that the, the curriculum team is letting the Common Core specialists and experts go away. I mean, is that what we're saying?
I think there's some validity to that. I think that it's going to go situation by situation. For my school, I do believe it is going to be an integration, and I do see that person as being a Common Core leader, absolutely. They, that person has to have the knowledge of the resources that are available.
Are our Common, and Mr. Clutter, maybe you can answer this. Are our media specialists going to, how many, how many of our instructional teachers or teachers go to Common Core training right now?
Thank you, ladies.
Like last summer, when we had it?
Mr. Kennedy, you can ask each one of the principals, because they know what team they picked.
The, there was two same dates. We had two professional developments. One was last summer, and one is scheduled for this summer. These schools have actually submitted their names for this summer. We do not have, that I know of, media specialists listed to go to the trainings.
This is Julie Dixon?
No, ma'am. This is the summer-sponsored FDLE, the Department of Education. Just like the ones that we had last summer, they're going to be holding those again.
And that's the, that's the primary Common Core?
That is the, the professional development.
And we don't have any media specialists going to it?
Yeah, but let me read to you that the sessions are actually geared. So I want to read to you why, the, the full picture. Because the, for, the recommended school team participants include principal, this is what the DOE is actually recommending, who the principals that we sent out, and then I sent out to everybody, who they would actually recommend to go for the summer. Include the principal, assistant principal for curriculum or instruction, English language arts teacher, reading, reading lead teacher or coach, mathematics lead teacher or coach, science lead teacher or STEM coach, social studies lead teacher, career and technical education lead teacher, exceptional student education lead teacher, and ESOL teacher, lead teacher. Recommended district teams, then it goes on.
Now, those teachers, what do they do when they come back after they do that?
What they then do is they then go back and they actually work with their staff at their school to then do those same sessions back to their, to their staff.
So we don't, we don't have any media specialists on that, that grouping?
That's correct.
Did we last year?
We did not last year because, again, the terminology last year was in the same mode because it was basically recommendations of those folks that would be sent.
But you did have on their curriculum.
That's correct. Yes.
We heard that many of the media people serve in the curriculum capacity too.
Right. I'm just saying, this is the DOE memo.
Who do we define as a curriculum person?
It's typically the TOCs at the middle schools and the TOCs at the elementary schools. So that's what I'm saying. I wanted to provide you with that information, is that that's the DOE memorandum that I sent out to the principals that they base their, now this year, each school basically has teams of eight going.
And the teams are paid for by the county? Is that what you're saying?
No, it's part of the, you know, remember, we've got two realms. We've got the, the race to the top that we actually own, and then the other 50% that the state actually reserves, they are using those dollars. So last year, we basically got reimbursed $42,000 for that summer training. And this year, what would we be looking at? Probably about $45,000, about $45,000. So those are actually ones that we are receiving funding from, from the state.
So unless from that list, the funding is received, is that correct?
Well, yes, we have to send that in. Yes, that is correct. We send down the names of the members, and they basically reimburse us. They basically look at districts that are traveling distances for overnight stay. It actually was, I think, four days last year, and it was three this year. It's planned for two, sorry, thank you, two days this
Thank you, Mr. Clutter.
Thank you.
Okay. Where are we, Mr. Blocker? I'm so lost.
If I can take you through the capital fund.
All right.
But I guess we need to have some type of closure or some direction as to, do we want to...
Do we want to talk about the, it in conjunction to the staffing plan?
Well, yeah, I understand that. But do we want to schedule a workshop to come back and go over it? Because you said something about bringing back that original list to start talking about it again. I mean, it's certainly up to y'all.
We wait till we get to the staffing plan before we come back to it?
Um, you don't want to look at other potential areas of cutting?
I remember this, and I think why didn't you have huge changes just on the six that we weren't working with back then? We need to bring that back and look at it.
And I, and I don't disagree. The only problem I'm saying is, I think then you'd pretty much then have to take elementary media specialists off the list. Because at this point, I guess my question would be is, can we implement doing that even now at this time of the year?
We'll have some suggestions, but we have, we're out there.
Proceed to the capital?
Yes.
Okay. Rather tiny. I don't know if I can blow it up or not, but essentially... Good look at the five-year work plan as we've kind of established it for the upcoming year. It has about $52 billion in revenues, including a fund balance roll over about $38 million. And then we come down with our expenditures. So the total appropriation is about $26.5 million. We have set aside a reserve of $1.5 million for the Duke non-payment potential. So you'd have an ending fund balance of about $24 million. And if we roll that out across the five years, eventually you would have a fund balance of about 8.6 or just under $9 million. And that would include, on your Dell computer leases we spoke about before, that's a buyout. That's not a releasing of it. We also did plug in the dollars for the one-to-one technology initiative. Those dollars are plugged in across the five years. So those are a couple of the highlights. As we spoke about before, the Christopher High job will be complete as we see it today for now.
Mr. Blocker, just again, for some, some people that they see in the room, they, so that they can understand, can you explain whether capital dollars can be used for general fund and explain just that?
The capital fund is simply derived off the 1.5 millage rate that we've raised locally. That's for construction, remodeling, maintenance, purchase of computers, purchase of school buses. Certain things can be refunded in the capital to your operating for those type of activities. So your maintenance personnel, they're out there working on the, on the buildings, essentially. Those are pretty limited. But the main thing is construction, remodeling, maintenance, and the maintaining of the schools, school buses, et cetera. So computers.
As I was saying, the technology and those pieces, they come out of the capital?
For the most part. You saw there were some operations, operational dollars that came out of general funds.
Thank you.
And then the next slide just goes over our bond payments for Christopher Primary School and Christopher High School. And then the transportation, you remember, this past year, we did not replace any school buses. We took that off the, took that off the funding when we got reduced in, from the Duke Energy non-payment. So this next year, we'd be proposing to buy like six buses for the Transportation Department. And then some use of impact fees. We're anticipating the Full City Water Treatment Plant hopefully being approved. We're working with the county now on the use of impact fees to help hopefully offset the, the cost of that new sewer treatment plant. And then if you see in the out years, 16, 17, potentially the Inverness Middle School traffic light that we've been talking about, and Mr. Dixon's are working with DOT on. And then some, the capital budget for the, for the Technology Resource Center, typical cabling, video projector replacements. But the big one is the one-to-one plan that we've put out for this coming year. And it's about a million dollars this, this, this year for the next, for the FY14 year. And then this is the rollout for the 13, 14 to one-to-one expansion. You can see where it's all going and the costs associated with it.
This is largely the same piece that you showed us before?
I believe so, yeah. And then if you roll out that out for the next five, four years after that, you can see the one-to-one, it's plugged in for all those years to meet, hopefully meet that mandate of the electronic media and the electronic textbooks, et cetera, and the taking of the test on the electronic computers or iPads if we're going to decide to buy.
And we took out the Dell moving forward. I know pre, at one time, we had, we took, we took it to a buyout, but at one time, we had it rolling all the way through.
We did before we had this work put in there. And then IS, the big expenditure there is the student management system and the business management system. And that's reimbursed through enterprise software. And then capital for food service, we did go back and look at that, and we were able to plug in some capital for food service as well. And this is our copy machine and phone lease that we reimbursed out of capital. And then here's the Dell computer. We're, you can see in the 14 years, the last of the big lease payments are 2.5, and then you go to the buyout at $700,000. Code compliance has a few small issues. Code compliance has a few small issues to maintain some of those areas that are hazardous materials or inspections, et cetera. Maintenance has been downsized with this expenditure as well. They're down to about $3 million now, capital needs to be up to $6, $7, $8 million. And facilities, they are basically looking at the HVAC system here, LaCanto High roof, Emmeris Middle School roof, Citrus Springs Middle School HVAC upgrade, some kitchen renovations at Rock Crusher and Pleasant Grove, re-roofing at Pleasant Grove, starting that project, some brick repair, et cetera. So there's some large jobs tackling for this summer and next summer. And then the out years, the capital budget. And then start trainers that we budget for. Any questions about the capital budget? That's a pretty quick rendition, but we went through it previously, so. Nothing really has changed on that presentation.
Any questions? Thank you, Mr. Blocker. Appreciate it. Okay, so I guess we need to approve the staffing plan? It says approve right here.
Hello, once again, I'd like to request the approval...
Are y'all awake?
Yes, ma'am, absolutely. I'd like to request approval of the board for the 2013 staffing plan.
We're gonna talk about it, I hope.
Yes, yeah, I think we are.
We should look at that, Mr. Dorchman will have a question for you. Couple of years ago, and it was, Mary Curry was assistant principal, assistant superintendent at the time, so I don't know how many years we were going back.
Kind of wild.
We had, I think, budget cuts and looked at the staffing plan and tried to make it equitable and at one point, we decided it was too prescriptive. You know, we were assigning a certain number of very specific jobs based on student population and we came up with the concept of having flex units, which is a, here's your, here's your school, here's your budget, here's your, you figure it out. You want media specialists, fine. You want two P E teachers, fine. This is the number of units that you get for your school. You want a TOSA, you don't want a TOSA, that's up to you, you're the principal. She said it, we're all different. And I agree with that, especially at the elementary school, maybe middle school's not quite, because high school has to be very prescriptive, based on the number of credits that have to be taken. So...
That staffing plan had minimums, where they were given principal, assistant principal, and some, a few specifics, I'd have to pull them up.
And whatever happened with that? Did we throw that out? Did it not work? I don't remember.
It got very expensive, because a lot of those positions were in addition to what the minimums were. I'd have to pull some of those out from the back, from way back when.
When it comes to curriculum though, then do we set minimum expectations then? Like, for example, you still have to keep your library open, you still have to run P E. And of course, you know, I mean, some of those then becomes, well, this school doesn't have a library open.
Mr. Dorchman, I talked to the district this morning and there's a couple of them out there that they do. They give a principal, which is, here's your number of points to put in staff, which you want to... Or is that, Simole used to do it, and they do that, we have to volunteer. We have to file it.
They buy the points?
It's not my teacher's cost, yeah, we have a certain, that budget.
You know, a couple of thoughts on that. First of all, each school is different. Each school has different expertise and knowledge as far as their staff goes and their needs and how they use certain of these positions. Some people have, people in this position that do it very differently than another school. And I hate to say, you must cut this particular type of teacher or this particular type of curriculum. Who are we to know that that's the best decision for that school? And what I'm, I have a lot of reservations about using aid instead of certified teachers, specialty teacher that's required to have a master's degree. I just, I just, in all consciousness, can't say, I would ever approve that. I would never vote for that.
I will tell you, the other day in the principals' meeting, I gave them that option. I said, we need an instructional unit, and we threw a couple of positions out and the principals came back and said they would want, they wanted to be consistent across the board. Now, if we give them that direction and let them take more positions, they want to. Why do they say they want to be consistent across the board? Because of all the things we do.
Well, I think with moving children from school to school, not that we ever do that here, it would be good if things were pretty close to the same.
We've talked about, and Ms. Dorchman, you've said this, that our economic, socioeconomic is pretty much the same, even though we got one from one. And so there are certain expectations, I think, we still have for all of our schools. And I, I think we, you know, when it comes to it, I think we have to then either take it off the table or we have to say we're gonna, you know, and look somewhere else. Or we have to go and go down that road.
You know, this is not one of those positions where I would see that if you suspended them for a year and had to bring them back, that's not gonna happen. Because what's gonna happen is, there's gonna be an increase in budgets, gonna be increase in staffing, and when we get to that, then it's out of California, and that's gonna be that. Because that's the way it works, no matter what we think or hope or believe, that's the way it works. Taking a program away for a year is a little easier in bringing a program back than taking rid of positions and then adding them back again. Because we've seen a lot of positions that have been eliminated that have never come back.
I totally agree, I totally agree. And I've been on a soapbox lately about that quarter mill money. We told the public that if you don't vote for this quarter mill, we were gonna cut things such as Marine Science Station, such as swimming program, and other positions like that. We've not done any of that. I will tell you, and I don't, this isn't derogatory to our media specialists, the public probably doesn't care if we cut media specialists today or tomorrow. They won't recognize what we've done in the schools if we don't cut programs.
And let's clarify, when we say public, we're not talking about our parents.
I'm not talking about my parents.
Because I can tell you, the parents, they have taken out in loud support of our media.
Because, and you know why nobody recognized that? Because everybody in this room, if I take Elaine Loggins, put her back in the classroom, or Kay Mill, who I sit next to church every Sunday, so it's been harder to her today. But you know what? They'll all go do their job and nobody will skip a beat because no one will see what we've done when we make these cuts. So until you impact the people who did not vote in our quarter mill...
Well, that's not the way to do it, I can't agree with that. But that's just, I mean, you know...
I'm not talking about with staff, I'm saying that staff, they'll go out there and do their job.
Yes, they will.
The people who didn't vote for, they don't know if we will keep them or not. But until we impact what other programs where they can see a difference...
Are you talking about cutting out football at the high school level?
I'm talking about several things. Of course, they make money, we can't cut them right now.
Well, I'm kind of coming with Mr. Kennedy's player thinking when he questioned 1.6 or 1.7 million dollars just spent on Renaissance, which is money that we're spending on students who are not behaving and we're saying we're gonna get rid of our media specialists in favor of students that aren't behaving.
Well, I will just tell you that...
I'm kind of getting the lights going on on this one.
Mr. Mullin had, when he did his presentation, showed us that if we were to make mini renaissancees at the high school, we would create a savings of $905,000. And I have said, do we sacrifice, or do we sacrifice 9,000 students in order to say we need to get 90 out of our school system? Because right now, what we're saying is that 90 students are more important than 9,000. And I struggle with that, I really struggle with that.
And Mr. Kennedy asked that question at the last workshop, would you rather have this or that?
And I frankly was a little hoping that I wasn't gonna get the answer I got. And that was, save Renaissance, I can live without media. And that's tough.
That wasn't the answer you got.
It was the answer I got.
It is today, but it wasn't then.
No, that was what I got two weeks ago.
Really?
Yeah.
Was I asleep?
No, don't worry.
And so I would again, I guess, ask this board, you know, I totally value what we're doing at Renaissance. I think the transition program is one of the best things this board has ever done. I believe in that program. But can we afford to operate it in that way? Or should we be saying, because we are going to affect 9,000 this year and how many next year when we don't make cuts that we need to? Are we gonna take out the rest of the 6,000 students?
I think Mr. Kennedy would have, he'd answer for the principals who said they would like to have the center maintained.
And what we're saying is, 90 students on average at Renaissance. And I know the impact of those 90 students, believe me, I know how important it is to get one of those students and those behavioral students, but this room... Well, I understand, but that's really now where staff's been, I feel like, is, we asked that question and the next thing that I know, the staff's saying, well then here's $500,000 in savings in the media specialist. That is what we asked and that's what they gave us.
And Mr. Mullin, when we were talking about that, because I remember a little differently, we were talking about having centers at the high schools or at the schools like they used to be. And there was an issue of certification, where you'd have to have teachers teaching the students and supplement classroom, we're certified to teach.
We would have to rotate teachers then, we couldn't do it like we used to do.
And I think that answer also came from, because the schools have told us that they, that we will see an increase in expulsions. Because, you know, they won't have somewhere to put them, but to go back to the cost difference here, so...
Well, and as you said now, right now, we have to have individual subject area teachers at Renaissance. Theoretically, our principals can then rotate those current teachers that are on staff there. So that's where that's cost savings was being explained to us.
Well, it's also the administrative overhead.
You don't have the administrative overhead.
Yeah, yeah, we did invest a lot of money in that program. We keep investing, investing, that's when we started to ratchet back a little bit this year.
So remember, your transition program has one teacher, instructional teacher and an aide typically, because it's on the Plato system. Which is, that's actually the most affordable...
But that is for our high school and for our middle school.
It's it. I don't know, maybe the transition exists at one school for the whole county. Because again, that part of the program is actually not our most expensive part, that's a pretty... We have one teacher and one aide for roughly 20 to 25 students roughly, that we fluctuated in there. That's pretty close to what we're doing at the high school. But generally, we fluctuate.
We put eight there today.
We put... That's true.
We did say there today.
It might be 28 right now. I'm just saying again, that was my point then. If we aren't gonna make a cut there, then we're gonna have to impact the classroom.
And that would be almost easier to suspend for years, say, middle school Renaissance or high school Renaissance for one year, eliminate half the staff, eliminate half your administrative costs, eliminate your costing, save, maybe save the $500,000. What happens with the budget for the next year? So, you know, what the disruption is at the schools, what did it end up costing?
I will tell you, this board member would much rather see many renaissancees at the high school than lose the list of these services, like media, like TOSSAs, all of those programs that impact every single one of our students. I would much rather see a change at Renaissance than reducing our services at our schools.
And the media specialists get the kids back down.
Oh, she can, I've worked with her.
Just a comment, I've had lots of, that have been very successful in my classroom and have done a wonderful job with no behavior problems.
Could they stop selling drugs? I guess that's what we're gonna start doing.
We got that going on right now in our schools anyway. Sorry.
No, I was thinking of one of the principals.
Mr. Smith, when you stepped out, Ms. Dorchman congratulated you for something, I don't even remember what now.
I, we were talking about how the disparity between our expenses and our revenues has gotten smaller, even though it's still a big chasm and that you all have worked to increase our revenues the last year, seeing that there was that big deficit and that I would hope that you would continue to do that. And we thank you for doing that, even though you all weren't able to do it all, we're happy that we got something.
And with that said, I want to load a bus and go to Tallahassee, I want somebody there. And just tell those people that the struggles were happening.
Well, and that's, that's the issue, is the struggles are universal, they're not just ours. And so, you know, we're going to be hurting, everybody's gonna be hurting in the same way. And sometimes it takes the next year for them to go back and fix what happened the year previously. What? Oh, gee, you must try.
Get right up here. You have three minutes. I'm teasing.
Well, yeah, I don't want to take three minutes. And the biggest thing that I think you'll see is that we are trying to do the right things for the right reason, we made some very tough cuts in the past and we are going to soon have money. We're looking at the state of Florida, growing a thousand people a day. And these are a thousand people that are in their 30s and 40s. And those are young entrepreneurs, we're gonna start bringing businesses.
Are they coming to Citrus County?
Slowly, but we want our jobs to grow for our people first, before other people come here. But the big thing is this, we do listen as much as we can to people like you here on the school board and the community. That's why we passed legislation that has established consortiums. These consortiums are very important, so instead of from a top-down having doctors and professors at the top telling us how to run an education, you'll have a better format to bring the information from the grassroots up. One of the big things I've done with my task force, and to tell my chairman of the task force, Mr. Kennedy, we've reached out and found issues specifically that we can deal with. When we realize that there is a certain section that obviously, you're not gonna be giving a blank check and say, here, run the school, but there are things that we can do. And subsequently, that information is part of the reason that bill has been put together the way it was.
I want to go back to that blank check, why can't we have that?
Because just in the entitlement system, there's fraud, waste and abuse of over $700 million within the state of Florida. And you wonder where your taxpayer money goes. So that's why we don't do blank checks and we put certain requirements within things from education to entitlements.
If you gave Ms. Hemel a blank check, it would be spent wisely.
Well, I believe that here, but unfortunately, it's not.
Thank you.
We'll just take that.
Mr. Smith, just answer me quickly, because we had seen an increase in 60,000 students a year during the heyday. So if you're saying 300, I'm gonna do the math, it's how ridiculous is that? 365,000, I was thinking, wait, that's a million, right? 365,000 new residents, why would they be coming here?
Well, actually, because we've been very successful at what we've been doing. The state of Florida has reworked its attitude towards business and the mindset of being business friendly. We in Texas are in competition for a lot of businesses to come here. If you look at the news, you'll see everything from Avis and moving their corporate headquarters here to small modern pop businesses that are tired of being overtaxed. Not just overtaxed, because New York has actually cut some of their tax, but they did not cut their regulations. And what we had done is say, listen, let's not be redundant and do things that both the federal and state level government are doing. But also, let's not have that mindset when somebody comes to do business, say, sorry, we can't do it. We provide them alternate avenues to get things accomplished. And that's why more businesses are starting here, and it's private sector businesses.
So is the prediction that then the revenues are going to return to levels that we would say are acceptable to run our schools the way we think we need to?
Yes, ma'am. What you're seeing right now is that the home sales, even though what they're increasing for... foreclosures, those are actually going to start moving very fast, but you're starting to see the price of homes going up. What you're also going to see follow that, it's a little bit of a lag, is the tax basis will also come up with that. So you're going to start seeing that revenue come up. Tourism is kicking in big time. During the last two years, we actually had an increase in tourism, and that's why we had an increase in budget this year. But also, for the fact that what we've done with manufacturing to bring those corporations here, we've helped diversify our economy. And we're no longer looked at as being the place for your parents to retire, we're looked at as the place in the United States to come and do business.
Citrus County is still the oldest.
Ma'am, that is actually changing.
Is it?
Yes, ma'am.
Who's beat us?
Well, we, if you will look at the population that is coming in from other states, we are actually starting to draw in more people of medium age of 30 to 40 years old.
In Citrus County?
Well, it's not coming in large numbers. Be patient.
Okay.
But in all likelihood, I think you know, and which is going to provide another dilemma for you. If we're successful at doing what we want to do, we're bringing in people in their 30s and 40s, guess what, they're going to bring in students.
Children, yes.
So in that, the big thing I want to come up and say though was, please feel free to constantly contact me about things. Sit down in my office and have a cup of coffee and get away from the politics of the issues, and let's talk about specific areas in which we can make changes to give you latitude to do things successfully.
Thank you. I don't know where I'm at, I've got to figure it out, don't I? Oh, we're staffing plans, yeah.
So I guess here's the thing too, and it's kind of like what we kind of drew the line in the sand last time, is that we are in a district and we have high-quality schools, and we don't want to do anything that negatively impacts that. So I think those are kind of, for me at least, the non-negotiables. And the non-negotiables last year were those things that impact directly student achievement. So I think anything that's on the list that impacts student achievement should be off the list. And I don't think we should keep putting these same people on the bubble. You know, every year, when they come to school, they have to say, oh my goodness, what's going to happen to my position this year? The same people, it's like the poor little people that live in those little fringe areas always get rezoned back and forth, back and forth, back and forth, and finally we say, you know what, that's not fair to keep doing it to the same people, that's just not right. Causes too much stress, uncertainty, you know, you're not going to attract your best people into a position that they say, well, I don't know, but it's still going to be there next year. So why would we do that to ourselves? So I believe Representative Smith, when he tells us that times will be better and money will be coming back to support the level of quality of education that we're used to, and so I'm willing to hold my breath for another year and not do anything that negatively affects.
Okay. So what are we doing with the staffing plan? Are we going to workshop that as well? Think we should workshop it?
I think we should workshop it with some ideas. I think we should go back and look at the number of students, these ratios, I can't sit here and tell you art music for 25 instructional units, does that make sense? There's a lot of difference in student populations. I still think there's an error on the LaCanto High School staffing plan.
Yeah.
We have 96 units versus 88, we have the same number of students.
And I don't know if Mr. Davis has been, Mr. Bittner here for that reason? Because I have the same, I've got down LaCanto's.
Can you explain that to us, honey?
You want to take that?
I can answer any IB part you want, I can't address the entire staffing.
Well, the quick answer is this, if a student's in your IB class, he's not in another class, right? I mean, you don't have two Spanish teachers, and with half as many kids, you have 25 kids in one class and 25, it could be Spanish one, Spanish two, or IB Spanish, and still 25 kids making class, right?
They're not under class size reduction though, we're actually loading those up heavier.
Okay. So then you shouldn't have additional units, open above the number of teachers or the number of students you have, some of them are designated as IB, you don't have the same number of teachers in Citrus High School with the same number of students, and then additional six instructional units.
But the way, when it was established, when the IB program was established, it was set up to run as a, with the PIBS program as well. And in doing that, it takes extra units to run that program in order to help make that program successful throughout the school.
What kind of additional units?
Like in our ninth and 10th grades, we're doing inquiry skills classes that needs up a unit. We've got some of our math classes, when you get into the upper-level math, you know, our regular kids, our kids, whatever color, are not getting those masks, they're designed for those IB students.
But you still have 1,654 students.
Today.
And you still, okay, and if you have, let's just say...
But remember too, Ms. Deutschman, we were, last year, we were built on 1,848 students, that's what we built our master schedule on. We, through help with Mr. Blocker, Mr. Mullen, and the staff at the school, we ate three of those units during the year and then used the long-term sub, which was four units. Then when we came in for our staffing with Mr. Blocker and Ms. Swain and their staffs, we gave up another eight or nine units. So we're 12 over 13 units in this year.
So I think the stuff, so what we're questioning is not what you're saying, what we're questioning is this chart.
If I could maybe shed some light?
All right.
If you look at how we staff the high schools, we essentially take their forecast and then back out their ESE units.
Uh huh.
Because those are staff schedules for ESE.
Right.
So we take those out, and then once we go through and divide that by the class size made at 25, and we take a ratio of 75%, I think of fact, or even planning periods, essentially LaCanto High has about four, they have two extra units for the IB program, and then they have four extra units for their increased student enrollment over Citrus High, so that's where we're getting the difference of the seven.
No.
But plus they have...
It says we got nine.
Well, if you look down, you got 96 total, and then 88 and a half.
But instructional, which are the units I think that we're talking about having to do with student contact and teaching.
Uh huh.
You've got projected 1628 students at LaCanto for next year, and 1533 at Citrus High.
That's correct. The difference of 95 students.
Right.
Which is about four units in itself.
And, okay, so, but you've got between 84...
Wait a minute, wait a minute, 90 students equates four units?
I thought it was three.
I thought it was like one.
Yes, one of the 25.
One of the 25 is 21.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So, okay, so four units. But then you, so there's still then three units for, there's three additional units there then, and you're saying two of those are basically it?
For teaching units in the IB program, and then you have an extra TOSE with Mr. Bittner.
But then we also got an extra office clerk too.
That's correct.
Where, for example, the Crystal River Highs got the Health Academy, they took their media aide and used it as their, their basically clerk for that. So they've actually got, and at LaCanto, we've got two extra.
Well, one is offsetted by one less SAIA too. They only have two, the other schools have three, that was their offset when they did that. And then they have not been able to lose a clerk through attrition, whenever that happens, LaCanto High knows, Mr. Davis and I have spoken, that whenever that happens, they would not be able to replace that clerk.
There's also an extra custodian.
That's for the Curtis Peterson alternative.
No, there's down there, there's another one.
Well, down there.
There's also that other.
Right, it's based on square footage.
Okay.
But also remember, we took transportation away, their custodian.
Right, and LaCanto High covers the bus garage.
LaCanto High School's custodians is cleaning the bus garage?
That's correct. And then LaCanto Middle covers student services, and LaCanto Primary covers TRC.
And the ESE is based on the ESE population.
Correct, and the inclusion model.
Right.
I'm not suggesting we cut units, I'm just saying these numbers don't drive.
Drive.
Yeah. They don't drive, so.
Well, I mean, when you compare subject area to subject area.
Yeah.
That's where it gets, and I understand it, but I mean, when I look at, I've got 16 math units at LaCanto and 12 at Citrus High.
And LaCanto uses two math teachers to teach electives. They're teaching intensive math and pre-algebra, which we don't teach in the other schools. So if you go drop down, look at their electives vocational, you'll see where they're short.
And that's where they're short on that.
Yeah, so they've chosen to use those in academic areas.
And if I can explain to you, these numbers came during the staffing meeting. At that point, they did not have their master plans, their master schedules completed. So those numbers will be adjusted as far as how many teachers teach math throughout, you know, at this time of the year and throughout the summer, we will continue to adjust those numbers, and they are adjusting them right now. So that is not the exact maybe number that will be in the math department.
This is a moving target, we're shooting at.
With regards to math, science, social studies, those core subjects.
Based on the scores they get back over the summers, how they use their staff too.
And they also, can I share, the high schools also had input as to base, when they started working on their master schedules, we went back to them and said, all right, what units can you give back to the district, how many units can you reduce by? So they also had that input as far as what they could reduce by. We are also still considering, once we know those final numbers for LaCanto High School and Crystal River High School, based, we will continue to monitor that even through the beginning of the year, if we need to transfer a teacher from LaCanto High to Crystal River, or a teacher from Citrus High to another school, or vice versa, we will continue to monitor that. So those numbers could still change, until we have the final numbers.
In all the schools where we're doing reductions through attrition, if we have an opening at another school though, are we relocating that?
Yes, we have had those discussions with principals, and they are very aware that if there is another, let's say, secretary or position, or office clerk position, they will lose that unit.
And it's not, again, that we want to do those things, they're not fun for anybody, but if we need to balance, we can't keep inequity among the schools. Because I know some schools are already set, kind of making those adjustments, and it's creating challenges.
And that's where I can say honestly why we like the consistency, is because we are really able to see, and we've identified, Mr. Blocker and I, when we've gone through this, okay, I see some inconsistencies here, and we've discussed with the principals how we're going to handle those. So we have had those discussions.
So we feel comfortable approving the staffing plan, or do we want to workshop it?
No, we need to workshop it, and I think we need to spend some serious time talking about Renaissance.
Yes, I know.
When you think about it, what's our enrollment now, 90?
Well, this time of year, probably the 120 or so.
All right.
But then I added as low as 70, so I mean, you take an average.
Think about it this way, that's five classrooms. You've got five classrooms of students, it's one grade level in an elementary school. Five classrooms of students, you have a principal, assistant principal, a social worker, guidance counselor. Guidance counselor, you've got PE five teachers, and three electives, and ESE teacher, and a reading teacher, and aides, and custodians, and two PE teachers.
And a cafeteria.
And a cafeteria. So.
But so here's the question too, and I think this becomes, it is, does, we can bring that down and down and down, and does it get to the point that then it's ineffective because we can't run a separate school that way? Because you can only get it down so much because you still have to have those subject area teachers. You're going to have to have those individual ones, you're going to have to have the administrators and the other pieces. You know, do we water it down to the point that, yeah, we can get it down to maybe under a million dollars or more, but does it become then totally not what you were wanting?
Ineffective, yeah.
Or do you then say, you know, we have to look at something different? And I don't, and I'm not saying I know the answer today.
Yeah, I don't know. I don't know either.
Okay, so we're going to postpone the staffing plan?
I asked, if we're talking about a workshop, what date would be looking at? Do we have, how long do we have to advertise?
Table it, that's what we're doing.
Then we have to pull up the next general meeting, we're not going to have a general meeting.
Table it till the next week.
Okay, so I'm going to move that we tabled the staffing plan until the next meeting that the school board meets, whether it be a workshop or a business meeting.
And do we have a date that they're anticipating?
Well, our normal workshop day would have been May 28th, when there's no school that week, so I, you know, unless you guys want to do it the week before, it's fine with me, but we have to advertise, Ms. Linda. Next Tuesday, you're almost going to have one.
So just, if you need me there for that, I will not be there the last week of the month, so if you want to do it the week before, I'll be here. If you don't need me, then...
We need you, Mr. Blocker.
Well, we need you, yeah.
I didn't think so.
Well, if we're going to talk about the budget, we need you.
You're going to Mississippi.
Yeah.
I know where you're going.
So the last weekend, we'll not be here.
Okay.
Meaning the 20, uh, well...
28.
Memorial Day week.
So we could, you know, even the 24th, there's no school.
It's a Friday.
Is that Memorial Day weekend?
It's Friday.
Yeah, no, that's fine.
I mean, any of those days, I don't care.
Me neither.
Good day.
It's up to you all.
So it's that Thursday?
That's graduation.
That's all? It's not all there? That sounds like we're going to...
Oh, just, oh, you mean doing it during the day?
During the day, yeah.
Basically third?
What, like Thursday?
Basically third?
During the day?
Thursday, 23rd.
Thursday, 23rd?
Yeah.
That work for you?
Do you have enough time to kind of put your thinking cap back on? We're already ready.
Yeah, I mean, I'll just resurrect the old...
Hey, we're already ready.
But I want to make sure, guys...
Do you need it as a workshop, I mean, do you need it as a special meeting though? Because we're going to take me out?
I mean, if I could ask, if we do a workshop in the morning, schedule a special meeting, if for some reason we don't come to a consensus or a decision, we'll just adjourn, you know, the meeting.
And do we want to do any expulsions that day? We hope not. We hope not. We took care of all of today.
I hope we did.
We've got one letter written. We got, okay, all right, don't worry then. That's right, that's the time of school, so what do we do?
Yeah, then we can, we can do it till June.
Guys, I want to be sure that we are able to talk with the principals, have their input one more time, because it's decision time, we need your input, what is important to you, because you know how your school runs.
There's a room full of people here, are we saying then, are we bringing consensus to this board again that we are taking anything off the table, or not?
Good question, Mr. Kennedy.
Because I, I mean, I feel like there's some things we've, I'm not sure where we stand as a board.
Well, I'm opposed to taking the media special talk to the staffing plan. You know, I don't think that's, I don't think that's a good, it benefits the temporarys. So...
My concern that I heard was, when I heard principals say that they thought, or maybe trying to plan for this to be temporary, because if that's the case, that just doesn't make sense for us to even consider, to go down that. So if that's what we're talking about, then I, I think, you know, I'm in that same thinking, I just come back to again, where do we make the cuts? If we're talking about, let Renaissance becomes, you know, a big conversation in order to keep those other things, I am totally in agreement. But if you're not going to take, do that, then all of those other lists really become broken.
We hope to table it. I made a motion to table it, I don't know if we will be invited.
Do we have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Hi.
Just one comment, if you don't mind, that Renaissance is on the conversation block. We do have units there that we're going to have to find homes for as well, you know, filter them out. Right now, we're in that time period, so the sooner we can...
But you're talking about just about the same number of units as are in this room[1689.13] But you're talking about is just about the same number of units as are in this room among media special?
I'm not, I'm not saying. I'm just saying that's another factor. We gotta make sure that we got postings right now going on. We just need to make sure we're cognizant of that. Notwithstanding what we were talking about today, that's just another dilemma.
Okay. Thank you, sir.
Maybe he'll find some five hundred thousand dollars under a rock somewhere. He didn't know it though.
We think we're meeting the twenty-third.
Do you want it in the morning or the afternoon? Oh, it's the last day of school.
Let's, let's.
The morning.
We're gonna be supposed to be in the morning, yeah.
In the morning.
I think we have to. And you know, seriously, I know it sounds silly, but it's housekeeping stuff we have to do. We may just want to bag lunch or something and just work through it because we're gonna have to go home and get ready to go to the graduations.
We'll talk to Roy. He'll bag us the lunch. Okay. Approve agreement between the school board of Citrus County and CCEA ESP.
Dismissed.
Dismissed.
Thank you for coming.
Yes.
And don't, and I, you know, I think we've hard come, you guys don't feel like you have to come.
La Canto please input.
Don't worry, input to us, please.
Thank you for your help.
Good night ladies.
I do have a copy of the ESP contract that we have agreed upon, both parties. And I believe you have a copy that you've had for your review. Don't know if you'd like me to highlight anything or if you're comfortable with it.
Well, I can, you know what, I'm sorry. Maybe it's just me. I had no idea.
I, I thought they actually, the same thing, cause it, it didn't have.
We need to talk about this.
And maybe, maybe we can in the future, like we do with, uh, you know, with the other code, if we can have a strikeout line because it, it was hard to know what was changed. So yes, highlight please.
Sure.
It, it'll at least.
There's very few changes. It can be brief. One simple thing was much like the code in the table of contents, we just corrected some page numbers to make it work. On page thirteen. I'm getting there. Okay, on page thirteen, number ten is an addition. Do I read that or would you like me to?
Please read it.
If an employee holds a grant funded position for two consecutive years, has received an overall satisfactory evaluation for each year in that position, and the grant for that position is funded for the following year, as long as the requirements for the position remain the same, the employee shall be offered the opportunity to continue in the position. This does not constitute a continuing service contract status. This is pretty much what the practice already is at the school sites. They wished that it be placed in the contract. We didn't have a problem with that. Copies of the agreement, that little paragraph has been changed just a little bit. CCEA classified and instructional contracts will be available for employees on the district website. In addition, up to three hard copies of the contracts will be available with each site to be maintained by CCEA and will be kept in a mutually agreed upon location. That's just a slight change to that. School enhancement council, the first paragraph remains the same. We removed a second paragraph that said that the board would provide the association with copies of all of the plans. Neither side felt that was necessary for us to do, especially since they're available on the websites.
All right. I've mentioned this before. The law now requires us to call them school advisory councils. That's our old law. So we keep seeing the word enhancement. I think we made that up actually years.
I made it up. I added it. Well, I'll, I'll gladly take it off.
So if you could just change that in the.
I did.
Sure.
And you still call it SAC?
Ms. Deutschman.
Well, SAC, SAC.
I'm fine with it.
School advisory council. Okay. We will do that.
You call mine head.
School handbooks. The only thing we added there was upon request. The association will be provided with a copy of all updated school personnel handbooks at association expense upon their request. It's not something we're gonna do on a regular basis. They don't need it on a regular basis, just when it's requested.
Okay.
Page seventeen.
Okay.
The lunch and breaks used to reflect twenty-five minutes. And, um, it's just been changed. All support personnel working eight hours a day will have a total break time of sixty minutes. School-based support personnel will have a duty-free lunch of thirty minutes and two fifteen-minute breaks. Non-school-based support personnel will have either a sixty-minute lunch break or a lunch break of thirty minutes and two breaks of fifteen minutes. This shall be implemented through an administratively developed and implemented equitable rotation system utilizing all personnel as necessary. So it was just reflecting the thirty minutes plus two fifteens that equal the toe rather than it used to say the twenty-five minutes. This is what we were practicing at the school sites. And then lastly, appendix A, which is at the back, immediately following page twenty-six. And it was agreed for us to match the salary scales of the union professional technical employees to the salaries of the non-union professional technical employees. So if you look at those attachments, you'll see where the professional technical twenty-twelve thirteen schedule and then there's the professional technical thirteen fourteen. And the one that we're going to do for thirteen fourteen reflects that what the non-union, that, that the non-union employees are making. We felt like it's not, it was not equitable. The Teamsters were making one amount and the, the CCEA union was making another. That's correct. The last year's is not the same as this year's. But this year's that you see here, the twelve, the thirteen fourteen that you see here matches what the Teamsters made, are making currently. We felt the union employees should make the same as the Teamsters employees.
So they gotta raise.
Mr. Blocker, feel free.
They gotta raise.
Essentially, this is what we, we still, uh, bringing it back off even. Several, several years ago, the CCA elected to take a pot of money and put it in their salary schedules where they wished and they did not add it to the PT schedule. Subsequently, the PT schedule on the Teamster side and the non-union side elevated. We're just bringing it back whole to where it should be. So they're all even. All the PTs make the same thing.
So is it costing us money?
Yeah, I believe on the, uh, there was an impact that was completed. I don't see it here at the time. It's minimal though. There's not many PTs in the CCA. It's a very minimal impact.
Okay.
The actual dollar amount, I don't have it right now.
Couple thousand, not five hundred thousand?
No, 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 no.
Not five hundred thousand. Good.
No, it's not five hundred thousand. It's very minimal. There's only, I want to say twenty members of CCA PT people. Do you know?
That's not a lot.
Yeah. It is. It's a small handful of people.
Thank you, sir. And that was it, the changes.
Okay, do we approve the agreement between the school board of Citrus County and the CCEASB? I do.
I move to approve the proposed revised and modified contract between CCEASB and CCEA ESP.
Same.
A motion by Ms. Powers, thank the Lord, and a second by Mr. Kennedy. Do we have any questions or comments? All those in favor? Aye. Motion carries four zero. Thank you. All right. Approve payroll dates for twenty thirteen, twenty fourteen?
I move to approve the payroll dates for twenty thirteen dash twenty fourteen.
Thank you, Ms. Deutschman. A motion by Ms. Powers and a second by Ms. Deutschman to approve the payroll dates for twenty thirteen, twenty fourteen. Any questions or comments? All those in favor? Aye. Motion carries four zero. Approve a job description and title change for transportation employees at salary scale C seven.
This is the item we worked on last time, correct?
I think so.
I move approval.
We have a motion by Mr. Kennedy and a second by Ms. Powers. Do we have any questions or comments? All those in favor? Aye. Motion carries four zero.
She's probably not sad.
Mr. Dixon, approve to advertise for public hearing at the July ninth, twenty thirteen school board meeting to approve the revision of policy eight point four zero, general food service requirements.
Yes, they're all the same. The three of, all the, uh, the items that are requested for.
Can we lump them all together?
I think you have in the past.
All right.
Does it change the name to Department of Agriculture?
Yes, these have already been worked shot and they're pretty minor changes on this group.
I move approval, uh, to advertise for public hearing at the July ninth, two thousand thirteen school board meeting, uh, to revise the policies eight point four zero, six point one zero, and two point nine five.
So, thank you, Ms. Powers. We have a motion by Mr. Kennedy and a second by Ms. Powers. Do we have any questions or comments? All those in favor? Aye. Motion carries four zero. Need a motion to approve the minutes. By Ms. Deutschman and a second by Ms. Powers. Do we have any questions or comments? All those in favor? Aye. Motion carries four zero. Mr. Bradshaw. Praise the Lord. I mean, thank you, sir.
Amen.
Thank you, thank you. All right. Board members, well, I'll start with Mr. Mull. Do you have anything for us? Ms. Powers?
No.
Mr. Kennedy?
Just the last time or whenever we, we talked about pay for play. I know. And this is not really directly about, but it did, but it brought up a conversation that, that I've had with several people. And that is, we have costs that aren't, that we as a school board aren't covering and I understand why. Do we want to see, and I'm asking this board, if, if, you know, if we want to see this and get this information. Uh, band, if you want to be in band, you've got to raise three hundred and something dollars for one band, just to be part of band. That's not covered. Um, and is that a cost that we, you know, that we're looking, it says, we, do we really, do they have to have three hundred extra dollars?
Per kid?
Yeah, per kid to be in a band. Well, that's my question. There's, I mean.
But they always do that? But they raise the money?
Well, there's fund raises.
And some of those fundraisers involve forced fundraising obligations that if they don't do it, uh, so.
Twenty-dollar prize and forty-dollar candy.
Right. And I, I guess I just feel like there's a lot of these sports programs that we have out there. And, you know, one of the comments that I heard is, well, if you, if the dollar's gonna cost me for my kid to be in the sports program is what you guys said in the pay for play, then I do, oh, I'm sorry. Then I, I'll take that in a heartbeat. Um, and of course, the response is no, that still doesn't negate the fact they're gonna have to.
Fundraise.
Fundraise and do those other things.
Yeah.
I'm not sure this board is aware how much money we're asking students to raise over and above the basic obligation in order to be in those sports programs. And I guess what I'm wondering is maybe we've got some extra, either maybe we don't understand or maybe we need to scale back some of what the way we operate. I mean, do they need to have uniforms every year? Do they have to have, you know, there's.
They don't get uniforms every year. The band, they, they, we rotate them daily.
Well, you're gonna have shirts that the bands that are, are, are for that school year that they be, and not, and not just the uniforms, but also other clothing.
I thought we had seven, seven schools that we rotated.
They get an allocation every year and they can save that money up to be able to purchase what they need over, over a couple of years. They can plan for it. We used to rotate.
Right. You stopped rotating and you didn't tell me.
Yeah, we did, but it's been years ago and then we, they each get an allocation. But now.
But then they've got bonus packs. So if I'm in a, or a sports program, I gotta buy a, a seventy-five dollar bonus pack.
Now athletics, yeah, they all fundraise too. I mean, like you said.
That's what, no, that's what I'm saying. I think we, I'm, I'm saying, I, I guess I'm asking the board, either do you want or do you mind us getting some idea of the number of costs? Because when I taught baseball.
I don't mind it, but I don't think we need it by our next workshop.
Oh, no, 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 no. I'm talking about in the future.
Hold that thought.
Okay. Okay, that's it.
Thank you. Ms. Deutschman. I think this, um, sample. I think this meeting is adjourned. Oh, Sam has to say something.
Last week, and I just need to give this person credit, we were at the Golden Citrus College Board and it was absolutely phenomenal. The kids were wonderful.
They were.
And, um, we would not have had that this year. There were a lot of hands in the bucket or whatever there can, but they weren't working.
Well, we're going to meet again, hopefully relatively soon. For next year? For next year.
Get out your checkbook.
Each student that was mom made got a hundred dollars and got two pair, Sammy, I think, gave them five hundred dollars. And Mary and Jane, Dawn, Agar was giving two fifty. Those were our two special winners. And, um, they, they raised a little bit of money, not very much.
All right.